I will call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM and I'll call on Counselor Hanley to read the land acknowledgement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city of Thorold is situated on treaty land. The land is steeped in the rich history of the First Nations such as the Hadiwanrunk and the Alduschenoni and the Anish Inibey, including the Mississauga of the credit First Nation. There are many First Nations, Matys, and Inuit people across Turtle Island that live and work in Niagara today. The city of Thorold stands with all Indigenous people, past and present, in promoting the wise stewardship of the lands of which we live.
Thank you, Counselor Hanley. Are there any declarations of interest? Seeing none, adoption of the agenda. Can I get a mover and a seconder to adopt the agenda? I got a mover, Counselor Sentence, a seconder, Counselor DeAngelo. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Adoption of the minutes. 5.1, CL 13, 2023, Tuesday, April 28, 2023, special council meeting. 5.2, CL 14, 2023, Tuesday, May 2, 2023, regular council meeting. Can I get a mover and a seconder to adopt the minutes? Counselor O'Hare and a seconder, Counselor Decker. Are there any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Mayor's report. On May 4, I attended and spoke at Our Lady of the Holy Rosary Elementary School official blessing and opening. Counselors DeRose, Decker, Sentence, Acting CIO Maria Morrow, and Regional Counselor Whalen were also in attendance. On May 4, I also attended the Niagara Regional Economic Summit hosted by John Peller at the Wayne Gretzky Estate Winery and Distillery in Niagara-on-the-Lake. John and his team have been working with stakeholders in the region as well as Deloitte's North American Economic Advisory Practice to develop a perspective on Niagara's economic potential. Results of this work will be released shortly. On May 9, I attended the flag raising ceremony at regional headquarters hosted by the Niagara Region Economic Development to celebrate European Union Day. There are strong ties between the European Union and Niagara. The flag raising and their motto, "United in Diversity," reminds us of the importance of peace, unity, and collaboration. On May 13, I attended Merrifield Speedway's Big Bike Giveaway. Track owners Don and Lorraine Spees, along with Tim Bredman, owner of Auto FX Graphics and Signs, organized this special event and gave away over 180 bikes, up from 71 the previous year. Thank you to Don and Lorraine, Tim, track employees, members of race team, fan sponsors, including Thorold Fire and Emergency Services and the City of Thorold Cupie Local who donated bikes. Niagara Trail Maintenance Association Volunteers, an organization that promotes cycling in the region, prepared the bikes and handed them out to children and youth ages 3 to 15. Tim Bredman is also the association president. The look on the children's faces was something to see, another great community story. On May 17, I attended the Mountain View Lemonade Challenge at Fax Headquarters in St. Catharines. This was the kickoff for the Mountain View Lemonade Day, which will be held on June 10. Students from schools across the region competed in a lemon twisting competition, including Our Lady of the Holy Rosary Catholic Elementary School. Mountain View Lemonade Day is a fundraiser for Fax Niagara. Register for your lemonade stand today. 100% of the proceeds will send kids supported by Fax Niagara to summer camp. Kids helping kids is their motto. On May 15 and 16, I was part of the Niagara Region Niagara Week delegations at Queens Park. The meetings I participated in were regarding the South Niagara Wastewater Treatment Plant, which is very important to the city of Thorold. On May 26, Counselor O'Hare, CIO Minos Dalwaria, Megan McCray, Carrie Gruel, and I attended the Ontario paper Thorold Senior Centre for the Flag Raising Chat and Memorial Bench Dedication Ceremony. June is seniors' month in Ontario, and 2023 theme is Working for Seniors. The Senior Citizens Association Age Friendly Advisory Committee, the Thorold Community Activities Group, and the Thorold Public Library are just some important examples of groups within the city of Thorold moving this year's theme, Working for Seniors Forward. Stay active, stay safe, and stay connected. The month of June is a province-wide celebration of the invaluable knowledge and experience that seniors pass on to all ages within all communities. On May 29, we raised a pride flag at City Hall. June is Pride Month, and we were joined by Pride Niagara Chair Enzo D. Dividitis. Counselors O'Hare, Dividitis, Sentence, Regional Counselor Whalen, and city staff were all in attendance. Pride Niagara is a celebration of Niagara's sexual and gender diverse community and its supporters. We believe in and support inclusion, diversity, equality, and acceptance of all people. We want to provide safe spaces where everyone feels welcome. In the city of Thorold, we are all one. Earlier today, I attended the event hosted by ACON and ES Fox celebrating an innovative modular fabrication partnership for the Darlington SMR, which is Small Modular Reactor Project. This announcement was held at the ES Fox facility on Aggerd Road in Port Robinson West. Counselors O'Hare, D. Dividitis, Regional Counselor Whalen were in attendance along with Economic Development Manager Ken Shultons. And this is an extremely important project for the city of Thorold because ACON is going to be doing prefab work in Cambridge, and ES Fox is going to be doing their part of the project, ES Fox, at their Port Robinson facility here in Thorold. So this is a very good news story. Also today, I attended the Canal Mayor's Luncheon hosted by Algoma Central Corporation, shipping service company at White Oaks in Niagara-on-the-Lake. Niagara Canal City Mayor's and Regional Chair Bradley met with Algoma Central management to discuss marine transportation strategy, which affects us all along the Welland Canal Trade Corridor. And with the Thorold multimodal hub growing by the day, this is extremely important to their operation. National Public Works Week was May 21 to 27. This year's theme was Connecting the World Through Public Works. This special week in May is used to educate, engage, and inform the public about the essential role public works play in the community's quality of life. Public Works professionals are always ready to serve their communities and resilient as ever in their abilities to encounter challenges. Last week, we recognized our dedicated staff who always go above and beyond and provide the city of Thorold with frontline services that safeguard and enhance the quality of life in our growing city. Once again, on behalf of city council, thank you for your dedicated service. The Participate Action Community Challenge is a national physical activity and sports initiative that encourages everyone in Canada to get active throughout the month of June in search of Canada's most active community. The challenge is open to all communities and individuals ultimately recognizing Canada's most active community and awarding it with $100,000 to support physical activity and sport initiatives. Join the Thorold Community Activities Group in this movement to build stronger, healthy, and more active communities across Canada. For more information about their challenges, please contact them at 905-227-0545 or info@thoroldgroup.org. The One Thorold Community Wide Food Drive, benefiting community care, will take place this Saturday, June 3. From now until Friday, food items can be dropped off at the Prince of Wales Public School, Westmount Public School, the Thorold Public Library, and the Thorold Community Activities Group. On Saturday, Neighborhood Champions wrote Thorold will host collection bins in their front yards. The Port Robinson Community Center is also getting involved by hosting a barbecue from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM to coincide with the food drive as well as their community-wide garage sale. Let's get out and make this food drive a major success. And now I'd like to call on Counselor DeAngelo for a report regarding Thorold baseball.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity just to mention this fundraiser that Thorold Minor Baseball is doing this weekend. It's June 3. It's Clean Out Your Closets and Cupboards for Thorold Minor Baseball. We're collecting clothes, gently used, resellable, household textiles, bedding comforters, blankets, also small household goods, kitchen items. If you can bag the clothing and if you could pack the other items in small boxes, just bring those to Sullivan Park on Elgin Street between 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturday, just at the back of the diamond, or at the back of the field where the batting cages, where the washrooms are. If you park in that area, drop off your stuff. Just be careful, I should say, you don't have to be careful there because there's no baseball going on, so you won't get hit from a homerun ball, so you'll be safe. But we're just trying to collect a bit of funds and show our appreciation towards the city that they've invested in baseball in all different levels, and we want to do some fundraising to get some additional equipment that's required to improve some of the equipment so that our kids are more competitive. They're doing a great job at different levels, but this is a fundraiser that we just want to tag along with the investments that the city of Thorold has made in the parks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor DeAngelo.
And if anyone wants to contact me before Saturday, I'm using my house as a drop-off also up to Friday night, and then I'll be collecting items and then making sure it gets shipped on Saturday.
Thank you so much. Okay, up next, civic recognition. 2023 Runway of Recognition Award recipients. And I'll call on Counselor Decker and Regional Counselor Whalen for the announcement and recognition of the 2023 Runway of Recognition Award recipients.
Sorry, the microphone's off, Counselor.
All set? Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Iglesias and City Councilors. It's an honor to be here again, once again, on behalf of the Runway of Recognition. Little background on how we established and how we got going. A little over 18 years ago, a group of young enthusiasts wanted to pay tribute to a fellow named Dan Longboat. He was a great hockey player here in the city of Thorold. So them, along with a fellow named Will Slater, that was associated with, he was the editor of the Toronto Star back then, and it just happened he was a young Thorold person. He wasn't young by that time, but he was a great enthusiast and wanted to get something going to recognize the youth, sports, and the builders that we have here today and what we've gone through over the years. So tonight, we'd like to pay tribute, just say a little bit about the individuals who are being inducted this year. And along with myself and Counselor Decker, we'd like to say a few words and tell you who they are. So Nella, I think you start off.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, fellow council, staff, and our guests. So the 2022 inductee athlete baseball is Lou Gazola.
Thanks, Nella. So Lou Gazola, he was an outstanding baseball player and a pitcher. He was an integral part of the St. Catharines Metro's baseball team from 1988 to 2005. During that time, Lou played 316 games, made 254 pitching appearances, completed 82 games of pitching in 1,343 innings. He pitched 853 strikeouts and had 105 wins, being number one in team stats, and had 17 saves, being number two in overall annual staffs for the team to date. Lou won multiple awards playing in the Central Ontario Baseball Association. Those include League MVP in 1991, top pitcher in 1996, and League's Most Valuable Player in 1999. With the St. Catharines Metro's, he pitched top pitching awards over the years. He joined the Thorold Phantoms in 2006, where he continued to play senior baseball until he retired in 2015. In his time, he also won two OBA championships, one for Thorold and the other for St. Catharines. Lou continued to play in a high level of performance right up to his retirement in 2015.
2022 inductee athletic team, the Thorold Elite Track and Field Team.
Thanks, Nella. Most people don't even know we had a track and field team. Up till now, they didn't have any place to play. Now they're centralized right here in Thorold. So Thorold Elite Track and Field, commonly known as TETC, was founded in July 26 by Coach Stephen Feith and a small handful of athletes. Since then, the club has grown to currently include over 130 athletes, 20 coaches and assistant coaches all over Niagara. The club is very proud of its connection to the city of Thorold. Thorold Elite is currently ranked as the number three club of more than 100 clubs in Ontario based on athletic performances in the provincial championships. The club has taken the province and track and field community to storm and continues to expand. Their accomplishments in 2022 alone were 274 provincial medals and over 30 athletes in the ranking at the national level in track and field and cross country. They have earned four national medals and four, 14 provincial championships and one provincial record with more than come in 2023. One of their athletes named Athlete of the Year as well.
2022 inductee athletic team, Thorold Secondary School Junior 64 Kilogram Four with Coxwin.
Thanks, Nella. This rowing team saw Thorold Secondary School's rowing program build on their success from the previous year with a gold-silver medal at the night High School Level Championship known as the Canadian Secondary School Rowing Regatta. In the fall of 1996, the junior 24-kilogram crew began their winter of dryland training. They won gold that year, improving upon their 1996 silver medal finish. Coach Joe Crosby led this crew, ensuring that they were ready to race throughout the spring months. They went on to have an undefeated spring season leading up to the Nationals. During the three-day regatta, the crew went undefeated in the heats and the semifinals. The coach appeared to have them work hard in the final race, and they established an early lead. They had on, they held on for a 200-meter race, ensuring that they were open to water victory. This is the only time that the event was ever won by a Thorold team.
The 2022 inductee builder for baseball is Fred Matheson.
Frederick Matheson. Everybody that knew Fred loved Fred. He did great work for the city of Thorold in the baseball program. He was born on January 27, 1966, and was a beloved member of the Thorold community. He was known for his kindness, generosity, and deep love for baseball. As the president of the Thorold Baseball Association, he dedicated himself to organizing and running daily baseball activities, ensuring that every aspiring player had access to the sport that he cherished. Fred's commitment to the community extended beyond Thorold. He was actively participated at Merrifield Speedway and the Thorold Legion, where he was considered family. His acts of kindness and willingness to help those in need endeared him to many, leaving an immersive impact on the community. Although his untimely passing in 2022, he left a void. His legacy lives through an establishment of fund in his name, which aims to honor his love for baseball and to continue his spirit for giving. Fred Matheson will always be remembered fondly by the Thorold community.
The 2022 Male Athlete of the Year, Ryan Miotto.
Ryan Miotto. He began playing for the TAA at a very young age. He was able to be selected by a AAA team in his area with Southern Tier Admirals. During the time, he was selected to play for Junior B for the Wellington Canadiens, and later was drafted by the BCA L to join the Chilliwack Chiefs, the Petecton Vees, and now Burnie Bulldogs. He went on to achieve the NCAA Division One Hockey Scholarship, and Ryan appeared in 42 games, tallied 17 goals, and added 18 assists for 35 points. He led his teams in goals. He was second points in the first on his first two teams in faceoff wins. During his career, he earned the Atlantic Hockey Player of the Week, won the Atlantic Conference Championship, and qualified for the final 16 of the NCAA Division One Tournament. He holds many other awards, such as the Golden Horseshoe Rookie of the Year in 2021-22, RBC Cup Championship, All-American Scholar Student in the year 2021-22. But last but not least, he was recognized by the Atlantic Hockey Academic Team, which honors those students and athletes who posted GPA of 3.0 or above during both their semesters in the academic year.
The 2022 Female Athlete of the Year, Ally Sentence.
This one will really sink home to one of your counselors, which it will do. Ally began her basketball journey at the age of four. She then played house league and traveled for the Pelham Panthers and the Niagara Rangers, where her team won the Division 1 OBA Championship. She was a tournament MVP. In grade eight, Ally joined the Niagara JUEPL prep team and competed there for four years in the Premier Basketball League in Ontario. Ally has captured many numerous Player of the Week awards and played three All-Star Games. High school was her engaging in many sports, basketball, volleyball, cross country, track and field, soccer, and ultimate frisbee. Yes, you can imagine that, there's a competitive frisbee these days, so things have come a long way. Her summers were spent participating in numerous showcase tournaments, where she earned a spot in Niagara Kia Nurse Elite EYBL team. In the spring of 2022, she was recruited by Central Connecticut State University, a Division One school. Ally put up some impressive stats this season, playing 24 of 29 games and contributing 14 assists, 23 rebounds, 17 steals, and 44 points. As you can see, Ally is already an extremely accomplished athlete who is deserving of this honor. She is set to keep the following her dreams and making Thorold proud.
The 2022 Team of the Year, the Thorold Anchors OBA Champions.
And not there's a conflict, but another counselor has a devout interest in this team also. Henry's son was one of the best pitchers on the team, so. So some great, proud fathers here tonight, which is great. Anyhow, in 2022, the Thorold Anchors started their season in February, working indoors and getting ready as the weather would turn. The Anchors came out strong, representing the city and convincing a 9-5 win the opening day in front of fans at the OBA. The next saw them pile up some losses, while the coaching staff lead teaching young, new players the importance of learning how to lose before they could win. Amidst the losing, the Anchors remained strong during the year, a strong franchise, remembering the city for which they play. They spent their weekends teaching Thorold Minor Baseball Clinics and raised 1,500 pounds of food for community care. They stayed the course, winning and losing started the balance out. By the time provincials came around on Labor Day weekend, they were top of their game. With one loss in the double knockout tournament, the Anchors faced a 7-0 lead in the fifth inning. With two outs in the bottom of the fifth, they mounted a comeback for the Aces. Thorold walked off at the bottom of the seventh and would not trail by any of the remaining four games that they played. Thorold's hard work this season was capped off by 11-0 mercy in the finals behind their ace throwing a complete game.
The Darryl Mailer 2022 Coach of the Year, Corey Youngblood.
It's amazing what dedication some of the coaches in Thorold have. Corey coached two teams last year, and he's coaching now, I believe, almost 25 years. A great citizen of Thorold, Corey will be our Darryl Mailer 22 Coach of the Year on June 12.
The Albert Trombone Ciento Award, 2022, the Unsung Hero Award, Gene Sitrigno.
Thanks, Nella. This award is special, I imagine, to everybody that's grew up in Thorold. Albert Ciento, which was, I guess, affectionately known as Trom by everybody, was a fantastic guy. He knew everybody in town, he knew where they were playing. If you were lost, he'd tell you where you should be playing. I got a funny story back, I guess it was, Bob, you can clarify this, back in the early 60s?
Yep.
There was a tournament between Pennsylvania and Thorold, and it rained like heck on a Friday night. So Trom got his staff together, went up to McMillan Park, dug holes in the infield, put gasoline in it, and lit it on fire. Can you imagine today getting up seeing the infield of McMillan Park on fire? Jim would be calling the police and getting him arrested today.
They call the law, Neil.
So, so there's some great stories. Tom was an affectionate guy, did whatever he could to see sports in Thorold. It's only fitting that this year that our unsung hero is Gene Sitrigno, who similarities, past president of TAA, president of the Thorold Soccer Club for many years now, is not because he can't find anybody else replacing, his heart's in the right place, so well fitting for Gene to get this award this year.
The James A. White Award Memorial Award, Senior Athlete of the Year, Jack Hale.
This is a TAA award, so Jack will have more words said by the president at our gala on June 12. So we don't know much about Jack, other than he was a great sportsman in Thorold. The same with the next one that Nella has.
The Michael J. Eggeroff Award, Outstanding Junior Athlete of the Year, Carson Dickinson.
Once again, a TA award, so Carson will get his due on June 12.
Thank you.
Nella, thanks very much, Nella, for helping. Just want to let everybody know that our gala, like I said, is on June 12. We're looking forward to another great venue that night. Tickets are limited, so you go on Eventbrite and buy your tickets if you're interested and make another year a success. It's hard to believe this is our 16th anniversary, our 16th due, and we're looking forward to another great event that night. So unfortunately, our mayor won't be in town that night, so we'll miss you. I know Terry's heart's always been there. He's been there compassionately over the last 16 years, so we'll serve Thorold proud in your absence, Terry.
Thank you, Regional Counselor Whalen, and it's always great to hear the inductees, and it's a great evening. It's one of the highlights on the calendar during the year, and the enthusiasm in the hall when you walk in is just, it's amazing. So I'm wishing another successful banquet, and I'm sure it'll be outstanding.
Thank you.
And you're going to stay up now because I'm going to have you back up to announce and recognize the White Family Foundation Scholarship recipients.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Another great night, another great accomplishment by the young people of Thorold. I just want to recognize that Bob Elliott is with me tonight, one of our committee members, so thanks for coming, Bob. So we've got three young people here tonight. Those people that aren't familiar with the White Family Foundation, it's a scholarship we have in Thorold. Normally, it's male and a female recipient, but it was so hard of a task this year that Jerry White, that presented the award and made this possible, said if we had a hard time, pick another one. So if you look around, we've got three young people here, and we had 20 people interview for the award. It's amazing, those people that have bad vibes of what people, what future Thorold holds, it's unbelievable. Any one of the 20 people could have been recognized there. So it was a challenge, and looking forward, you say we're short of doctors and lawyers? Four or five years, or I guess a little bit longer than that with articling and so on. Thorold's going to be in fantastic shape with lawyers and doctors coming back to Thorold from these students that we had to recognize. So, anyhow, so I'd like to ask them to come up, the mayor has a special award for them. We started off with Emma Jenkins. She's a lifelong person of Thorold, lifelong citizen. She's a student of Dennis Morris, and she, I'm sure the counselors would like to have this bad grade that she got, 96% in grade 12, which is fantastic. So congratulations, Emma. And in the fall, she'll be attending Guelph University in biochemistry. So Emma, if I can get you to go up there with the mayor and wait for the two people that come up behind you. Our next winner for the $40,000 for the next four years, I'd like to call up Nathan Peller? Nathan? So Nathan, again, he had a lousy mark of 93% in grade 12. I'm sure some of these people would like to have that that wasn't reversed when they went to school. So Nathan, congratulations. Nathan participates in basketball, baseball, hockey, football, volleyball, and soccer. In the fall of this year, Nathan will be attending Brock University in biological science. And our last but not least, the recipient of the White Family Foundation, Charlotte Fall. Charlotte, again, has been a lifelong resident of Thorold for the last 18 years. She participates in hockey, and she had, oh, she only had 94%, so which is fantastic. Congratulations. So, in the fall of 2023, Charlotte will be attending Trent University and honors degree in criminology. So Jimmy, she might come in handy.
So now I'm going to get all three recipients, and you can get yourself, if you want to counsel, and we'll get a picture. You just can stand in the front and all of your things. I don't know if you should stand in the front, because that'd raise the issue.
Get them to the right, whatever you can. You're on, I can't.
I'm standing right there.
I'm standing right there.
Just make sure they're phone numbers.
Yeah, right.
It is the same.
(APPLAUSE).
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Just a reminder, the tickets are available until June 6, which is Monday, and they're available on Eventbrite, so they reserve seating, so anybody that wants to attend, you're all welcome. It'd be great to have as many as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whalen. And thank you for all the work you do, and thank you to all the recipients. Well deserved. Okay, up next, we're going to have presentations, and we have the Heritage Advisory Committee overview. overview, and I'm going to call on Anna O'Hare, Chair of the Heritage Advisory Committee, for a presentation respecting an overview of the work within committee and heritage in Thorold. Welcome, Anna.
And city staff. Before I start, I'd like to thank Wyn Stack, who is one of our new committee members this term and who created the PowerPoint slides used tonight. I'm sure there are others among my age group who can handle this kind of work effortlessly, but I'm unfortunately not one of them, whereas Wyn is a pro, so I'm very grateful to her that she helped me out with this. And of course, my thanks to all of you for this opportunity tonight. Can I have the next slide? Heritage, as you know, was dealt quite a blow in Bill twenty-three. Since our committee's mandate is the conservation of Thorold's heritage, we are here to remind you of what is at stake. But don't worry, I'm not going to give a history lecture or a sermon about the glories of historic architecture. I will stick to issues which concern every one of us. Can I have the next one? We all know that time cannot stand still. Development and especially city center intensification is necessary to fulfill the needs of our changing world, including here in Thorold. This is nothing new, change has always occurred throughout history. We have always adapted to new circumstances. It is part of what is generally called progress. But cultural heritage is not a barrier to progress and development. Equating necessary progress with the destruction of our heritage is an irreversible and costly mistake, detrimental to our cultural identity as well as our economic and environmental stability. We need housing. Our government throws it at us at every turn, and it's true, it's a basic need that has to be filled. But this rather loose term "housing" does not necessarily refer to affordable housing, which we need most. It could mean anything, from student residences to multimillion-dollar mansions plunked into the green belt, with the focus primarily on new construction. We have to consider another key term as well, the one which matters most to our and our children's future, and which goes hand in hand with conserving our heritage, and that term is sustainability, cultural, economic and environmental. This is our new reality, without which progress in our fragile world is no longer possible. Next slide, please. With regard to environmental sustainability, Canada is one of the world's leaders in waste production, and the largest single-source contributor is the construction industry. That's not to say that we should do away with construction or development, of course not. But tellingly, Canada is also the only G7 country without a clear and effective heritage conservation statute, and heritage conservation can and must play an integral part in waste reduction and resource preservation. Next slide. Contrary to popular belief, historic buildings are not inefficient, but when retrofitted and well-maintained, generally fair as well as or better than new builds in terms of energy efficiency. They are built with superior craftsmanship, of superior materials, their designs are climate-conscious, and they were meant to last. The fact that they are still standing proud after a hundred, two hundred years or more bears testimony to their durability and sustainability. Next slide. To destroy buildings of such quality and cart their materials off to landfill is irresponsible and ill-considered, and has long-reaching consequences. Not only are certain raw building resources depleted at an unsustainable level, many modern building materials are leading producers of greenhouse gases and other pollutants. Meanwhile, countless tons of demolition waste have to be stored somewhere. Such overuse of landfill and emissions production comes at a price. Even a so-called "green" building takes eighty years to overcome the carbon footprint caused by its construction. Considering this, together with the escalating climate crisis and the urgent need to use our resources more sustainably, the indiscriminate and needless demolition of sound building stock in favor of new builds does not constitute progress, but an out-of-date fixation on a way of life that is no longer supportable. Whenever possible, priority should be given to the retrofitting and reuse of old buildings, and especially our heritage buildings, with new construction as infill, be it in a large city or a small one like Thorold. Architect Carl Elefantis' phrase has probably been quoted by thousands but needs repeating again: "The greenest building is one that is already built." Next slide, please. As urgent a topic as environmental sustainability is, we cannot forget about cultural sustainability and Thorold's historic significance either. Our history itself will never change, of course. It consists of events that have taken place, of hard, indisputable facts, assuming that it is told objectively and fairly. But history is not synonymous with heritage. What has been handed down to us throughout history, be it in the form of oral traditions passing on values, customs and knowledge, in the form of written documentation, or in that of buildings and artifacts which manifest the craftsmanship of our ancestors, that is our heritage. When it is lost, we lose our cultural identity and with it the most tangible means to remember our collective past and to apply these valuable lessons to our future. Next one. Through its heritage assets, and we are lucky to still have many here in Thorold, a city maintains its cultural identity, its uniqueness, which sets it apart from other municipalities. Heritage promotes a sense of place and diversity, and results in a feeling of pride and belonging in residents. Studies have shown that overall quality of life is higher in an environment where heritage is preserved and the new added where needed, thereby creating a harmonious collaboration of tradition and innovation. People are happier and healthier in the presence of culture and heritage, and happy, healthy people make for better, more responsible and more actively involved citizens. Citizenship well-being is also dependent on economic success, of course, and heritage conservation promotes economic sustainability. Rehabilitation of existing heritage buildings has been used successfully in numerous housing projects, including affordable housing. On the other end of the spectrum, property prices tend to be higher in areas with a large number of well-preserved heritage buildings. These neighborhoods are coveted and draw new residents with the means to contribute effectively to a city's tax base. These same new residents appreciate an attractive downtown boasting the charm and character of old architecture blended with well-designed new builds. This also applies to the type of small businesses needed for thriving downtown, and to tourists who are of particular importance in a region like Niagara, which Thorold sits right in the middle of. Many of Thorold's traditional industries are gone. New industries are moving in, and tourism can and should be part of this. Thorold's central location, its unique history, the fact that the most dramatic stretch of the Walland Canal lies within our boundaries, and of course, our host of heritage properties, are considerable assets which can be developed into a thriving tourist market, as well as attract committed and creative newcomers. Heritage conservation will contribute to drive a healthy and lasting local economy. In conclusion, what Lacag hopes to achieve is raise awareness that heritage conservation is not just a quaint hobby for a few old-timey history geeks, but a vital tool in the planning of a vibrant, prosperous and sustainable city. We are extremely fortunate in the outstanding research on our designation projects conducted by historian and heritage expert Sarah Kinghead, who is a fond of knowledge on Thorold's heritage. The committee is also profoundly grateful for councils and staff's support in our efforts. But heritage designation is only one part of conservation. We urge council to consider hiring a permanent planning staff member with heritage experience. We also appeal to all our planners and to developers to keep in mind our city's character, uniqueness and economic prosperity, as well as our world's shrinking resources. Many of them are un-renewable, including our heritage assets. Please consider retrofitting and incorporating these precious resources into new projects. Heritage conservation and new development do not have to exclude each other. They can and should be complementary. Thorold earned a very prestigious award in 2017, the Prince of Wales Prize for Municipal Heritage Leadership. Let's build on that, let's stay a leader. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Anna O'Hare, for the great presentation, and I'll open the floor for questions from council. Councillor Sennett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Thank you very much for the presentation on it. Great. I agree with you on all of it. Maybe we could look at combining a job somewhere with tourism and heritage and having everything in there. I like the combination jobs. I have a question for you. Do we have any energy rebate programs anymore for retrofits for heritage buildings? Like, is there programs out there? I know in new builds and stuff, you could get LED lights at one point in time, you had a program for that. Is there anything out there for heritage buildings?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. To councillor Sennett, honestly, I do not know whether any of those programs are out there. They should be, as should other programs to encourage heritage conservation, like maybe tax rebates to developers if they preserve rather than demolish. But honestly, I cannot answer your questions with the energy rebates.
Okay, thank you. That's what I meant. If they could access that, that'd be great. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Councillor Hanley.
Just to note on that, there actually is availability through municipal tax grants for heritage properties. All you gotta do is go to ontario.ca, PCG, I believe it is anyways, and there is programs available for owners of heritage properties to access grant money.
Are there any other questions for our presenter? Go ahead, councillor De Angel.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. Yeah, I just want to make the comment, Thorold's very proud of its heritage. This goes back a long time. Even myself being on council, we stepped in and saved Maplehurst at the time, that was very, very important for us, and there's been a lot that's been done over the time span. So your presentation was great, I think there's a lot of great points in it. The only one I wanted to highlight is, I know Mark Carl was here from Habitat for Humanity a few council meetings ago. I just want to touch on the reuse of items, because you mentioned as part of your presentation, there's a lot of construction material that ends up in the landfill. So I would highly recommend if anyone's doing a reno or reconstruction and they're taking kitchen cupboards out or something that can be reused, contact Habitat for Humanity, they have the restore, and at least it gets recycled as opposed to being dumped into the landfill. And a lot of the stuff is good, it's just people just want to upgrade or change a little bit, so I just want to re-highlight that as a great opportunity. And we have a restore here in Thorold, which is great. There's three of them locally here in Niagara, but I just want to highlight that point to avoid just sending more stuff to the landfill. That's the point I wanted to make.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further questions, thank you so much, Anna O'Hare, for the presentation, and it highlighted the importance of heritage in our community, and we work together to make sure that we move in a positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, up next, we have Code of Conduct Complaint 2022-01, and Dasha Paragodova, Partner for Mayor and Bearless LLP, Integrity Commissioner. And I'll call on John Mascaren to introduce the next presenter. Go ahead, John.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you very much for having myself and my partner, Dasha Paragodova, here this evening. We're here to speak about the Code of Conduct Complaint Investigation Report that we have presented, primarily investigated and written by Ms. Paragodova. She will present the report to you and talk about the investigation, our findings, our conclusions, and importantly for council tonight, our recommendations. So my name is John Mascaren. As you know, I lead our accountability mandates as Integrity Commissioner for the City of Thorold. We've been your one and only Integrity Commissioner since 2019, and we are appearing in our capacity tonight. We will present our investigative report dealing with the complaint against councillor Jim Hanley with respect to contraventions that we have found under the city's code of conduct for members of council and local boards. As council knows, you adopted a code of conduct as well as a complaint protocol that sets out a fair, reasonable, equitable process for investigations to be conducted on October the first, 2019. We will provide a very short presentation with respect to the investigative report. I'm sure Ms. Paragodova will say to you, the report speaks for itself, but she will highlight the important parts of the report in focusing on our recommendations. Following the presentation of the report, council should hear from councillor Hanley, should he like to make any representations. We clearly provided him with an opportunity to do so during the process. He was provided with a final draft report, and he could file submissions, which we received and which we did consider. Much to our surprise, even though we had indicated to councillor Hanley that he had a full opportunity to speak to council this evening, councillor Hanley felt that it was appropriate for him to communicate to council in a non-transparent manner over the weekend and file his submissions that he had produced to us. Let me be very clear, we have considered those submissions, and they are addressed in our report. So for the sake of clarity, the very submissions that you received were the submissions that we received and that are in our report. Following Ms. Paragodova's presentation, and that addresses specifically the report, we would be pleased to answer any questions that members of council may have with respect to the recommendations, our procedure, or any other related matters. Let me turn to the investigation. Our investigation was conducted in this case, as it always is, in accordance with our authority as an integrity commissioner, which is partly specified under Part 5.1 of the Municipal Act, and then it's addressed, of course, in your own code of conduct, and the procedures and the process that are set out in the complaint protocol. As I indicated, Ms. Paragodova carried out the investigation, but consistent with our firm's standard practice and mandate, I have peer-reviewed the report. I was consulted throughout the report, and I had a hand in drafting the final report. In carrying out our investigations into the complaint that was filed against councillor Hanley, we acted in a completely neutral and impartial manner, and in accordance with the specifications set out in your complaint protocol, the one that council adopted. This is all set out on pages three and four of our report. And now I will turn it over to Ms. Paragodova, who will speak specifically to the report. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. John, Dasha, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, John. Good evening to members of council, and just a quick word of acknowledgement to the award recipients that received their awards just before our presentation. I'm a retired athlete myself, so particularly the athletic and sports awards were nice to hear about. As Mr. Mascaren said, our investigative report pertains to alleged violations of the code of conduct, and in summary, the allegations related to various social media posts. Each of the posts in themselves were alleged to breach various provisions of the code of conduct, which are summarized in our report, but important to say that also the underlying activity which was referred to in the posts themselves, and which were documented by virtue of those posts, those two were alleged to breach the code. So it was a bit of a combination of the posts and the underlying activity, but ultimately leading to the same allegations of various provisions of the code of conduct. The specific sections of the code of conduct that the councillor is alleged to have breached are set out in Section Three of our report. We did also replicate them in Appendix A of the report for ease of reference, rather than having to go separately to the code of conduct with which we know that you are all very familiar. A little bit more to process, the materials and matters that we considered apart from the complaint itself is set out in Part Four of our report, which is on page three. John touched briefly on this, but we did initially provide councillor Hanley with a notice of complaint outlining the allegations and issues raised. notice of complaint outlining the allegations and issues raised, and asked him to provide a response in writing, that is our standard practice and consistent with the complaint protocol. And in other words, we were providing the counselor with an opportunity to respond in writing to the complaint. Initially, in response to that, Counselor Hanley only provided us with a very brief response in which he indicated that he would not be responding to the complaint, and that he would be saving any comments that he had regarding the report when it was received by council. We advised Counselor Hanley that he would only be permitted to address the recommendations, which is consistent with all the reports we had presented in the past and council's standard practice, and we strongly encouraged him for that reason to provide us with a response that we could consider in the course of our investigation. We also offered him more time if necessary. So, in other words, we really did encourage the counselor to provide us a response. We did not receive, we did not receive any response at that time. We did summarize in our report as a preliminary matter at page eight, the ample authority that exists for us as the Integrity Commissioner to have proceeded with our investigation in the absence of that initial response from Counselor Hanley, and we did, in fact, do so. We did proceed with our investigation. We proceeded after, after we concluded our investigative findings to prepare our draft report, which was provided to Counselor Hanley, including its conclusions, however, without recommendations, again, consistent with the complaint protocol and our standard practice. It is at this point that Counselor Hanley did provide us with his response, which you have now seen as, as Mr. Mascaren alluded to. It is that same response that is considered ultimately in our, in our report. Pardon me, just going down to my next comments. We advised Counselor Hanley, their investigation concluded that we would finalize the report and that we would provide it to the clerk together with our recommendations for council to consider. As we already indicated, we expressly advised Counselor Hanley multiple times that he would be entitled to make submissions to council on the recommendation portions of our report at the meeting of this evening. As, as Mr. Mascaren alluded to earlier, he did, in fact, predict correctly that I would be saying that our submission ultimately is that the report speaks for itself, and that's simply for proportionality's sake. It would be unreasonable for us to read you the entirety of our report during this meeting and provide you with a summary of every single finding. However, we do provide, in some summary fashion, that as any report, it distills and synthesizes various facts, issues, it assesses them against the framework of the Code of Conduct and other applicable policies, although in this case, no, there was no allegations of related policies made, it was only the code, and makes various findings and draws conclusions. What we did want to highlight is one particular element to note, that we'd have carefully considered the counselor's submissions in the response that council has seen and in earlier shorter responses from the counselor, which are consistent with responses he's provided in the past regarding his charter rights, and that is spoken to in detail in our report. And I did want to highlight that we considered that issue very, very carefully, as we also consider it important. The summary of our report is that the counselor did contravene the Code of Conduct, and in particular Sections 4.1F and 4.1G. Those are the sections that deal with members of council having to refrain from making statements known to be false or with the intent to mislead council public, and particularly, and I would characterize them as the more serious violations being in relation to 4.1G, which requires members of council to recognize that they are representatives of the city and that they owe a duty of loyalty to the residents of the city at all times. There were, important to say, and this is in consideration of Counselor Hanley's response, there were a few select instances or posts, all of which are contained at Appendix B of our report, which did not amount to contraventions, and we have highlighted specifically which posts we did consider to be contraventions, and in some cases where we did not find contraventions, and that was consistent with some of the counselor's response submissions. There were also remaining portions of the complaint regarding other sections, 8.1, 8.2G, 8.3, and 12.1, which were not substantiated and accordingly were dismissed. The contraventions are set out in detail throughout the report, but to refer you to a summary, that is at page nine, pardon me, part nine of the report, which is at page twenty. Which brings me really to the most important part of our presentation this evening, which is the recommendations that we have made to council to consider. They are at part ten or at page, pardon me, let me give you the correct, part ten of our report, and are actually the only matters that are, in fact, before council this evening. As council knows, there are two possible penalties under the Municipal Act when there is a finding of a contravention made by an Integrity Commissioner, which is a reprimand, or a suspension of pay for up to ninety days, and that is per violation. There are a few central things that we would like to bring to council, to council's attention with respect to the recommendations that we're making this evening pertaining to this specific report and these specific findings, which we feel are very important for council to consider in assessing our recommendations. First, the complaint detailed an array of separate instances and multiple instances of contravention on the part of Counselor Hanley, so it wasn't one specific isolated incident, it was a series of incidents, and in this case, particularly through the post and the underlying conduct. As many members of council will be aware, these are not the first complaints pertaining to Counselor Hanley, or the first time that we have found Counselor Hanley to be in violation of the Code of Conduct. And on that note, and perhaps more importantly, the prior violations in many, in many instances, if not all, were very similar to past conduct, both in respect of social media statements encouraging others or himself to actively, or himself actively defying laws or orders in place. So, the conduct, the pattern of conduct is very consistent with past findings of violation and past reports that we have presented before council. Council has also previously reprimanded the counselor and taken various remedial actions and steps against him pursuant to our prior recommendations. That has included a suspension from committees, and especially a suspension of pay for significant and lengthy periods of time. Notwithstanding all that, we have consistently strongly cautioned the counselor and encouraged him to comply with the Code of Conduct and policies. We have reminded him that similar grounds may very well result in additional complaints made against him, which is, in fact, what's happened, and possible consequences of escalated penalties being recommended and imposed. And I say that as you consider the penalty that we have recommended this evening. Notwithstanding that, the counselor has once again been found to have committed multiple violations, and those were not trivial or committed through inadvertence. They were quite similar, so even perhaps in past instances where the counselor said he may not know that something may amount to a breach of the code, given the similarity of the conduct, that it was difficult for us to find in this case that it could have been done through inadvertence or lack of knowledge, he, in fact, breached a higher ethical standard that is imposed on him by virtue of his position as an elected official, and we have explained in our report why that is a reasonable limit on his conduct. Taking all that into account, we have recommended that council once again denounce the counselor's actions in this particular matter and reprimand him, and impose a suspension of remuneration equal to ninety days in this instance. One last note is that we have not recommended remedial measures or corrective measures. We have set that out. They are, of course, a possibility with findings like this as Section sixteen of the Code of Conduct sets out, but we have done so in prior instances of violation where Counselor Handy, Hanley, and recommended various remedial measures, training, education, as I said, removal from chairing committees, apologies, but despite having formally complied with all of those measures, it seems that subsequent actions continue to take place, and they didn't necessarily achieve the deterrence or the educational incentive that they were recommended. As such, we, we did not feel that we wanted to recommend them, as we did not want them to effectively come up empty only to result in further similar conduct. So, as such, we are not recommending any remedial measures this time, however, we are recommending the penalty. John, I, would you like to make any final remarks? That concludes my portion of the, of the presentation.
Go ahead.
And I should say, of course, that I'm open to any questions on any of that or any of the report itself.
Before we open the floor to questions, John, did you have any remarks?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, just in conclusion, that's, that in a nutshell is the investigation report. As Dasha has indicated, there have been multiple transgressions by Counselor Hanley. We have reported previously. You have those reports. You have the council's prior denouncements. You have a pattern of conduct that hasn't been abated, and it continues. So, in this particular instance, we looked at the matter very carefully, and we did give incredible due consideration to Counselor Hanley's charter rights. We were met with, I'm entitled to say what I'd like. We have the charter, the right to freedom of expression. Council owes Duero well now that you have an opinion from a well-respected constitutional law firm that says what it says. Council members have read it. You now all understand it. We did look at his ability to politically make statements that he would like to make, and we looked at that through the lens of the charter's right to protect the freedom of expression of everybody in the entire country, and we yet still found that there were charter violations, sorry, code violations. Once again, Mr. Mayor, I remind you and the rest of the members of council that the only matter that's in front of council this evening, for your consideration and decision, are the recommendations. As noted by the Ontario Divisional Court in the Assale versus Town of Hoxbury case, quote, "If the Integrity Commissioner concludes that a council member has contravened the Code of Conduct, the municipality has no power to contest or question that conclusion. Its only powers to determine whether a penalty should be imposed." So, to be very clear, council has a choice tonight. It can accept our recommendations, it can accept our recommendations in part, or it can reject those recommendations. In any of those decisions that council may make, it should be made on a fair, equitable, justifiable basis. Ms. Paragodova and I will remain present to answer any questions that members of council may have with respect to our recommendations, and as I indicated, Mr. Mayor, previously, Counselor Hanley should be given an opportunity at this point to make any final submissions he would like to make as to the recommendations. So, thank you very much.
So, the questions, and Counselor Hanley's questions should be to the recommendations only? Am I correct when I say that?
Mr. Mayor, that's absolutely correct, and that's why I quoted you from the Ontario Divisional Court's ruling in Assale and Hoxbury.
Thank you. I'm going to open the floor to questions on the recommendations, and Counselor Hanley, would you like to go first?
First of all, Mr. Mayor, I did not receive the letter from the lawyer as requested. I have all the emails in front of me today. I think it was sent to all the councils except me. My first email received today was at eleven, let me go here, nine oh five AM, I received one from Municipal World, AMO at ten oh four, Marilyn Walker at ten eleven, Marilyn Walker ten eleven, Niagara Community Foundation ten twenty-four, Escribe ten thirty-four, Municipal World eleven oh one, Cheepo Air Can eleven oh seven, twelve twenty Clerks Department Webinar Host Invited eleven oh seven, Escribe, twelve twenty webinar, twelve twenty-two webinar, so on and so forth. I haven't received that letter, Mr. Mayor. It was not sent to me today. I do not have it.
To the city clerk will answer.
Yep. Through you, Mr. Mayor. To all of councils, it was published through the confidential correspondence, so it would have been one of the Escribe emails. It's available on the Escribe.
Well, regardless of that, Mr. Mayor, in all respect, due respect through you, we freed that, we received that correspondence today. I work until five o'clock. I work in a secure environment. I'm not allowed to have a tablet at work or whatever. I'm in a restricted area. I never had a chance to review the correspondence from the letters, so for John Mascaren or anybody to talk about it is prudent, as far as I'm concerned. I haven't had a chance to read it. So, that in itself, you know, is, and for us to move forward now, like, he's quoting on it, I haven't even had a chance to think. So, here I am, I'm going to defend a comment, and I haven't even had a chance to read it.
One sec, please, Counselor Hanley. The clerk will speak.
Yep. My only comment, Mr. Mayor, is the legal opinion that was requested was requested by council with regards to a motion from Counselor Hanley. So, that legal opinion isn't on the floor tonight or part of this matter. It is going to be brought to a, to a council meeting in closed session in June, at which point the council will have an opportunity to bring that original motion.
But it was brought up tonight, Mr. Mayor, by John Mascaren. He mentioned it. So, if it was not going to be tabled tonight, why then mention it in a public forum before council that has an opportunity to speak on the matter? I may have wanted to forward it to representatives. It's been spoken on the matter, so obviously it's on the agenda tonight. It was brought forward in a public meeting. So, to me, that's wrong in itself. Council has not had a fair time to do it.
Counsel, would you like to speak to the recommendations?
Okay, on the recommendation, I'm totally against it. I wear this tie tonight because it's a Canadian flag. To me, it represents freedom. It represents democracy. My grandfather fought in the Second World War, and I believe John Mascaren has erred in what he says in regards to my rights not being abused. I believe that he's named within a lawsuit, if I can mention it right now, where a person feels that he has abused those rights, and it's before the courts yet to be decided. And I too will, one day, I believe, doing the same, because I believe I have a right to freedom of expression. There's not one person in this that says I can, do not do good for the City of Thorold, because if I'm here tonight before what they're claiming for helping individuals and giving homeless people money and a trucker money for going back, and I give money to Ottawa Mission, and I posted things, see, what gets me in this report is they say that I've made false accusations, but in the previous reports, they said that those false accusations were because fact-checkers said they were false. I have the previous report, but this time, there's no evidence presented to prove or to contradict that what I said was false. It's the Integrity Commissioner saying that it was false. He has presented nothing than what my emails are. I have come to a point where I believe I have no other choice, probably, than to solicit legal representation myself, so I can prove that I believe that my abuse, my rights are being abused. Yes, I went to Ottawa, and do you realize that if I was not elected as a counselor, we would not be here today? Because the citizens of Thorold believed in me and re-elected me to be a counselor is why we're here today. The people spoke. The people knew that I went to Ottawa long before the complaint was ever filed, and what did they do? They elected me again to be a counselor, and because I was elected to be a counselor, I'm being punished for it. This is nothing but vindictiveness, because I believe I have broken no policies, and I appreciate it of the response from the lawyer. I've been waiting for one, because it will be reviewed, and I will be forwarded onto my representative, because I believe my rights are being abused, and that the city policy does not stand for democracy, like the Canadian flag does. It stands for democracy, and democracy is freedom of speech, freedom of religion, freedom of association. I represent this council very well and always have, and if you're going to punish me for what I'm doing tonight, then you're going to punish me for all the years that I've donated and helped families in Thorold.
But speak to the recommendations.
Okay? The recommendations to me is upon council to decide. I believe we need to move forward, that's right, and if council wants to suspend my pay today, this council will not be moving forward in a positive manner, because I will not let this stand. I'll tell you that right now, put me on the record. I will, and I'm going to defend my rights, and the time is going to be upon us soon. And the recommendations, as far as I'm concerned, aren't recommendations, and that it's taking away an individual's rights. I have done nothing to me that embarrasses the taxpayers and citizens of Thorold. I've done well in my twenty years as a counselor, and it's only because of vindictiveness is why we're here today.
Thank you, Counselor Hanley. The floor is open for any questions to the presenters regarding the findings in the report.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, just before you move forward, my ask is that you get a mover and seconder to put the report on the floor.
Do you want to do the questions first?
Because the presenters are the same as the author, you can do it all together.
Okay. Can I get a mover and seconder then to put CLK seven, two thousand and twenty-three on the floor? I got Counselor Decker and seconder Counselor Dividigus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll also just advise council- I'll also just advise council, what's on the floor is just the report to be received at present. If councillors wish to move forward with recommendations, as the integrity commissioner has suggested, that will just require a mover and secondor to do so.
Okay. But we need to vote on, put the report on the floor. All those in favor? Opposed? All those in favor?
This is to receive the report.
Receive the report, the report on the floor. We're not on the recommendations yet, just to put the report on the floor. All those in favor? Okay. Opposed, that's carry. Okay. Now, getting back again to questions on the recommendations to the presenters, to Mr. Mascaren and Mrs. Peregodova. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, at the appropriate time, there was a clarification that I'd like to provide just in response to councillor Hanley's comments, in case it may be helpful to members of council. May I do so right now?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Councillor Hanley mentioned that there were recommendations and findings made in respect of his giving or providing money or giving money away. I would encourage the councillor to review that particular section of the report as we actually did not find that he was in violation of the code of conduct in relation to those specific, I don't know whether to call them donations or whatever his term was. But there are no findings in respect of that. The findings actually relate to other posts and conduct. I believe Mr. Mascaren may want to also make a comment in respect of councillor's comment about the court matter, the ongoing court matter that he referred to. John?
Mr. Mayor, if I could. Councillor Hanley has indicated that he never makes knowingly false or misleading statements. I want to dispute that. He just made one. He made it to all of council over the weekend in a non-transparent way. He indicated very clearly that we are subject to a lawsuit where an individual's rights have been infringed and we erred at law. That is absolutely false.
I have a copy of the lawsuit. I have a copy of the lawsuit.
He absolutely knows that. Because why?
Hold it. I'm going to sit here and discuss it.
It's been publicly written about, Mr. Mayor. There are two decisions from Justice Goodman in Niagara region. Councillor Johnker, former councillor Johnker in West Lincoln, attempted to add us to a judicial review application. It's not a lawsuit. It's a judicial review application. He was wholly unsuccessful. It was completely denied with $20,000 in cost awarded to us as integrity commissioner for him attempting to embroil us in a lawsuit, in a judicial review application, that went nowhere.
I didn't say the findings.
Councillor Hanley knows this, Mr. Mayor. Because it's been well-publicized.
He was named in it. That's all I said. I didn't say about findings or anything. I said he was named in it.
Someone's speaking. It's not your turn to speak right now. When it's your turn to speak, I'll let you speak. Don't interrupt.
I said he was named in it.
Don't interrupt. Okay? Don't interrupt again. Go ahead, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, when councillor Hanley says that he's not misleading anyone, to state that we are named in a lawsuit, that doesn't exist anymore because we haven't even been named as a party or added to it, and costs have been awarded. And by the way, former councillor Johnker has now fined himself with four criminal charges under the Criminal Code for his participation in the Ottawa protest is completely misleading, is completely a misstatement. It's misinformation. It's disinformation. Mr. Mayor, I will not stand for this. This is completely inappropriate for him to continue to bring this up when he knows full well the matter has been over and dealt with and concluded. We are not a party to that litigation. And there is no wrongdoing that we are subject to.
Mr. Mayor, I want to comment. I wasn't aware of any findings, and they were named in it. I have a copy of, I have a copy of. I'm allowed to say something back, and I mean, I...
No, no, but listen. You were supposed to be talking on the findings. We're not getting into the whole debate on something that's not related to the findings.
He just made a statement. There was a claim made in court. I did not say that he was found guilty, or it wasn't. I said that there was a claim in court that he was named in, which was true. It's not false. It was true. The Attorney General, the integrity commissioner, and the town of West Lincoln were named in that judicial review. I wasn't wrong. I wasn't lying. The truth.
It's over. Let's get back on track here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And through you to council, I think at this time, it's worthwhile just mentioning through the procedural bylaw, as we do have a full agenda tonight, and there are a lot of issues that do require discussion, I want to remind council of the rules of debate as we go forward with this matter. Each councillor will have a limit of five minutes to speak on a motion, and will be given the option of additional three minutes only after every other councillor has had an opportunity to speak. Which means you can speak once for up to five minutes. You don't have to use all five, but you don't gain it back if you use it. After that time, everyone must have the opportunity to speak before you're allowed to speak a second time, at which point it's only for three minutes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so we're back on track, and thank you, everyone. And now we're on to reports on the floor, and we're dealing with the recommendations, correct? Is there anyone who would like to speak to the recommendations? Please raise your hand. Go ahead councillor Longo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make a comment. I really don't want to speak to the recommendation because it is what it is. I just want to say how underwhelmed I am with this process. This, I have so many questions I feel that need to be answered, but I'm not allowed to ask the questions, which is unfortunate. I can only talk about a 90-day pay suspension. Councillor Hanley brings things up, and it turns into a personal argument here for a neutral party that's supposed to be working on our behalf. I'm a little lost. I'm not quite sure what I'm supposed to do. Again, how, I'm just thinking aloud. How am I supposed to make a determination when I can't ask questions that need to be asked? This report, this complaint was from almost a year and a half ago. I've got questions about timing. I've got questions about how long it took for this report to come to council. And nothing, I'm not allowed to ask any questions. There's somebody out there who can throw darts at us. This process is unfair. This process allows somebody to be sitting at home on their couch tonight smiling because they know they're putting everybody in a bad position tonight. Everybody from the integrity commissioner, to councillor Hanley, to the rest of us sitting here. I need, they want me to, you know, whether I like a person or not like a person, impose a sentence? Somebody that I need to work with? How fair is that? This whole process stinks. And I've said this before, and pardon my language. But it's terrible, this process. And I know, I guess it needs to be done. But like I say, the timing of these issues, and how long this has gone on, and now accusations going back and forth and infighting, it does nothing for this council. People said they wanted to move on. Councillor Hanley said the people of Thorold spoke. I believe that. Has he done some things wrong? I guess. That's what the integrity commissioner says. But do I need to punish him now? The people could have punished councillor Hanley. So, again, I apologize for not speaking to the recommendations. I have no comment. I guess they're fair if he did these things. But again, without me having the ability to ask questions that I think pertain to this decision, without me, as councillor Hanley said, reading an email that came to me today at 11 o'clock, I didn't read it. I understand it's 14 pages from a lawyer. I'd need two weeks to understand that. So, I don't even know if it's fair for me to judge councillor Hanley. Sounds like he's threatening to sue somebody. Do I want to get sued because I'm taking his pay away? I don't think so. Is he going to sue me if I vote against him? Again, I just want to speak and let you know how I feel. Let the people know how I feel.
There is one thing regarding the procedure. I think, John, that that's a fair comment. Can you explain, under the municipal act, why process stops and starts based on an election?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'll let Ms. Peregodova answer that because she said she was going to answer this question.
I think Mr. Mascaren and I probably had very similar thoughts. It's outlined right at the top of our report, and we did want to respond to that and outline it right away because we did figure that council may have this question. So, pursuant to the municipal act, and it's section 223.4, sub 7, and sub 8, the complaint is suspended at the time of a regular election and within a certain time period of a regular election. So, in this case, while the complaint was filed on August 3, 2022, which you're absolutely right, is some time ago, because of the suspension by virtue of the regular election, we are, we have to suspend the complaint. We have no choice. But to do that, if the investigation is complete, and as you can tell by the date, it was quite close to the election time. There's no way we would have gone through the investigation process that we needed to do prior to that period, six weeks of voting day. The complainant is entitled to request to recommence the complaint, which they did following the completion of the election. At that point, we resumed our investigation process. We also, given the complexity of the complaint, including the charter issues that we were considering, we did report to council in the interim that we would be submitting beyond the timeframe contemplated in the code of conduct, which is 90 days. And lastly, the only reason why this matter was not before council last meeting was because councillor Hanley requested an extension to provide his response to us, at which point it would have been too late to properly consider that response, and then consider it carefully and finalize our report. So, that extended it by a further month. So, I appreciate that when you look at the time, the timing of the complaint, and now being May 30, 2023, that seems like a longer period of time than usual. But it's all for very good reason and still well within the framework contemplated. So, I hope that's helpful on the timing.
Go ahead councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the door's been opened for me to maybe ask a question then. So, in terms of the amount of time to conduct your investigation, is there anything in policies that say it has to be done in a certain amount of time? Or could you take a year to conduct an investigation? Is there anything that protects somebody from an investigation being dragged along for, what, almost eight months?
Thank you councillor. I would not say it's been dragged along for eight months. We're not in touch, we're not actually permitted to conduct our investigation in an ongoing fashion when the complaint is suspended. So, during that time period, nothing was done. That was the voting period, which is very clear per the municipal act. We only recommenced after. The complaint protocol specifies timeframes. There are also notable exceptions where, if necessary, we can report to council in the interim if that needs to be extended, which was complete. We explained the reasons for that, and council can consider them and always take that into account. I would say if we hadn't done so, and you and the councillor were left guessing in this process, that may have been a reason for concern, but we did not do that. We specifically wanted to inform you that this complaint was forthcoming and the process was ongoing. We also always update the parties to a complaint to make sure that they're aware of what's going on in terms of its status. And finally, there is an opportunity to bridge timelines at the discretion of the integrity commissioner. No one complaint is the same. You have read some of our reports. Some are very short, and some have to be very, very long because it would not be fair to councillor Hanley or frankly, anybody else subject to a complaint that we would not consider every one of its elements carefully. In this case, it was a 15-page complaint and required us to look at every single post and video referenced because, again, it would not be fair for us to not do that because then we would be making conclusions without considering the evidence. So, in this case, sometimes exceptional circumstances warrant additional time. I would actually say here, it was much more significantly exasperated by virtue of the voting and election period than it was by any significant delay on the part of the investigation. Again, I hope that's helpful.
Thank you. Okay, I got councillor. Are you done councillor Longo?
I'm done for now, Mr. Mayor. But at one point, I would like to bring this in camera because I have a question to ask our CAO about issues that can affect me as a councillor.
Very good. Councillor O'Hare, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just wondering, can we defer this vote on recommendations until our next meeting, seeing as that's when we're going to be discussing the constitutional lawyer's opinion that was published today, presented to us today? And with not a lot of time, as councillor Longo pointed out, for everyone to have read the report, it might be wise to allow time to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I'll turn that over to our clerk. John? John, are you good with that? That we defer the findings till the next meeting regarding, because of the legal opinion that we received today?
Mr. Mayor, you're asking, you're asking me if you should be deferring?
No, no, I'm just saying that's what I have on the floor, that...
Mr. Mayor, I think we got to call something here procedural. Like, this is a council decision, not a lawyer's decision. We shouldn't be talking to the lawyer about this. This is a council that should be made by council.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. A deferral motion is non-debatable.
You're right. Okay, so I got a mover and I get a secondor for a deferral. Do I have a secondor? Councillor Decker. Okay? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carry.
On a point of order, Mr. Mayor. I just... Because it was mentioned that we have this letter that was, or email that was sent to us on a Tuesday morning. Have to be before council. If we work till 5, it would have a... And I know there's standards for council, if they want to speak here at the council chamber, they have to let you know by noon on Monday.
Sir, I think your mic might be off, councillor.
Oh, it's on. Okay. Yeah, if we want to speak at council under an item to bring up, we have to let clerk know by noon Monday. Shouldn't we also have a flipside timeline that no additional information for report gets sent to council? Because if I get something on a Tuesday, unfortunately, I work. So, till 5 o'clock, and then I'll have a little bit of a timeframe to read something there. We have to do a flipside to that and say, okay, by noon on Monday, nothing else gets issued for any reports. And if additional information comes, just pull the report and send it to the next council meeting. I think it's a fair way of doing it because we need to report to the clerk if we want to speak or if we want to put a notice of motion or anything, or bring a motion for it. There's timelines for us. We need to flip that around so that there's respect for the time that I put in as a councillor so I can do an effective job. I feel I'm not allowed to do an effective job.
That's a fair comment. Did you want to speak tonight?
Yeah. My only comment, Mr. Mayor, is the item that was circulated through confidential correspondence earlier today is not specifically related to the matter that was before council tonight. It is related solely to the matter as to whether or not the code of conduct applies to the charter. And that was specifically requested by council in terms of whether or not the motion from councillor Hanley to update our code of conduct to reflect the charter should be put forward. So, although it is about the code of conduct, and you had a code of conduct complaint before you tonight, it is not specifically related. It was circulated as soon as received to allow councillors to at least have it. It will be on the council agenda in June.
Yeah. Just in fairness, to speak to that, that sounds good in principle. But it was referenced by Mr. Mascaren during our conversation. So, I have no idea what he's referencing when he's making that comment. To add further, being a new councillor here, I haven't followed the Jim Hanley story. So, I'm not sure what went on in the past exactly. I'm not sure what reports were, there were spoken to by reports in the previous. Now, if there's an expectation of me as a new councillor to read all those reports, then they should be included as part of this current package. That is critical for me. I'm speaking from a new councillor. There's three of us that are new. There's five that have been here, so they have a bit more history. That puts us in a, I go back to councillor Longo's comment that this process is far from good, not even... not even close. So I think we need to look at something to revise this a little bit so that it can be fair and equitable. So I think those are some of the things. I believe no one should make an assumption that the councillors are new, know everything that's going on in the past. That's a little bit hard to bring forward, especially if some of these reports are confidential. I may not have had all access to resources in the past unless I read it in the thorough news. So that's just a comment I wanted to make. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment? The, if you look at the complaint protocol, your own procedure that you've adopted, section 14 of it says, "Council shall consider and make a determination on the integrity commissioner's report at the same meeting at which the report is tabled." So council's made the decision that you would make the decision at the same meeting at which it's placed. I agree with what the clerk said. The legal opinion that you've received today is ancillary to this report. It can stand on its own. The only reason I mentioned it is because it was thrown out there that there were issues about the charter and I just wanted to clarify that. And to respond to councillor D'Angelo, it was, we did reference the reports in our report this evening. I don't think it's common practice to attach all prior reports to a report. They were referenced there and I appreciate that maybe not everybody had read the reports before. None of them were confidential. They were all public reports.
Thank you, John, but the motion was deferred till the next meeting, so that's when we're going to deal with it. The vote was taken and I have to respect the will of council. Okay? Okay, so thank you, John and Dasha, and we'll deal with those recommendations at the next council meeting. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, I'm excusing myself from the meeting for the rest of the night. I need to gather my thoughts and I have some conversations to take care of.
Thank you, councillor. Okay. Items for consent, okay? There's many of them and I know some of them we'll want to speak on. So can I get a mover and a second for all the items and then we'll go?
Sorry, I got caught up and everything and I was late. I have a conflict with one of the reports. Can I give it now?
Yes, you can.
I apologize for that. I'm on the TCAG board.
55? What is it?
Oh, sorry.
Is that the parking fees?
No, 11.4. Parks and Trails wreck for the volleyball courts for...
Oh, okay, I got you, sorry.
Yeah, I could have said 11.4, sorry.
Okay. We got that duly noted, okay? Can I get a mover and a second for all the reports? I got a mover councillor Decker and a second councillor Divididae. I'm going to go through them one by one because if you want to, I'm not going to pull 10 reports and then we'll go back. I'll do each one and then if you want to speak to it, we'll speak to it. If not, we'll vote on it right away, okay? Because we're going to use the same mover and a second for all the reports. 11.1, CAO-5-2023, application to the City of Thorold's downtown facade and grant program 11 Front Street. I had a mover and a second. Is there anyone who wants to speak to that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. CAO-6-2023, City of Thorold Community Improvement Plan for downtown Thorold and Thorold Centre, tax increment financing application by Landex Developments. Is there, I got a mover and a second or does anyone want to speak to? Councillor De Rose, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I wasn't going to move it or second. I just wanted to comment on it, Mr. Mayor.
No, no, we have a mover and a second for all of them. So, but you can, I'm going to go through them. You want to speak? Go ahead, here, the floor is yours.
Yeah. Can I ask our manager of economic development? I just wanted to ask staff why the delays with this file, since I see it had a trail going back to 2012 and just find it a little troubling that this timeline. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do you want to speak to that, Kenner or someone else? Is it, are you ready? Yeah, he'll speak to it. Just let him get to the podium there, councillor De Rose.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. In a previous council session on February 7, we entered a closed session to discuss report. Give me one second. It was mentioned in the CAO report, CL-K, CL-C3-2023, which discussed the history of this file and in regards to the delays that resulted in bringing the report out in 2023. If councillor, if the councillor would wish to go into details, I would suggest that we enter into closed session as it could be a matter of client's list of privilege.
Are we not going into closed session? Oh, okay. That's listed as a potential closed session item. If you want, we can do that at that time. Would you like that to go into closed session? Not right now when we get to closed session, are you? Would that be what you would like to do, councillor?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like that, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, we'll just deal with item 11.2 after closed session.
Yes, correct, okay. CLKC-54-2023, Parks, Trails and Recreation Advisory Committee Resolution Respecting Trail Maintenance. I have a mover and a second. Does anyone have questions regarding that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. CLKC-55-2023, Parks, Trail and Advisory Committee Resolution Respecting TCAG Volleyball Courts. Councillor sentence has declared a conflict. Is there anyone that wants to speak to this? Go ahead, councillor Longo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, staff's going to write a report on beach volleyball courts, but I hate to be the one that brings it up, but Thorold Community Activity Group supported the Canada Games Center. We built six beach volleyball courts over there and I drove by tonight and one is being used. So I'm not quite sure why we need more beach volleyball courts and what the potential impact will be. I guess I'm okay with staff bringing a report, but at the same time, I'll make it known that I don't know how we could spend more on capital in that area when we've just built six beach volleyball courts. So we'll just leave it at that for now.
Thank you. Is there anyone who want to speak to that or the report can speak to it? Or go ahead councillor Decker.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I could just give a little background on that. I know that the TCAG and the City of Thorold have partnered on recreational activities. There's going to be no cost to the city. The volleyball courts in the back are an overflow to the courts that they're using at the Summer Games Center for the amount of people that want to play. If there's any cost, the TCAG is going to cover the costs of the courts. They also think it will be great to use it for their summer camps. And if people are out there picnicking, they can use the courts as well.
So that's, so this will come back out in the report?
Yeah.
Okay, are you good with that councillor?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, all those, did you want to speak to that?
Well, I was just going to say, if there's no cost to the city, let's just move forward.
Anyway, they want to bring a report, all those in favor? Well, councillor De Rose, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, through you. I didn't, I just wonder where councillor Decker got that information because I didn't see it in what we had presented to us to rescribe. But if that's factual, of course, that changes their people's opinion. But I side with councillor Longo in this. They were a proponent about the Canada Summer Games Park and now we've got six beautiful courts there. So I'm just wondering, how does councillor Decker know there won't be a cost to the city? And does that mean the city won't be maintaining it? So there won't be any in-kind expenses? So that's my questions.
Well, that'll come back in the report.
Yeah, it'll be in the report.
That'll come back in the report. We're not making any commitment, it's just a report coming back, councillor Decker. I mean councillor De Rose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Parks, Trails and Recreation Advisory Committee Resolution Concerning Beaverdams Park. That's CLKC-56-2023. I have a mover and a second. Are there any questions regarding that? Go ahead councillor D'Angelo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that this, we have to improve our technology here. It's not very conducive to reading or seeing. Good luck, Tim. And my apparatus doesn't work very well. You could touch a whole pile of buttons, keep going, Tim.
Yeah, 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 no, there you go.
It only took about six tries, but that's okay. So it's, this is something I spoke about earlier at a different time that we need to upgrade our technology here so council can do an effective job, but I'll leave that for another discussion. But my point here is there, part of the recommendation is to review the original tender drawings incorporating in the current design of the park. Can we also, and again, I don't need the answer now, but as part of that report, can we come back with the financial numbers of how much we spent in the park? How much staff time was allocated to fix up the park that didn't meet the specs of the tender? And what are we looking at for additional cost here associated with that?
I think that report already came to council, did it not? We actually had that, but might have been prior to this start of new council. Can we make sure that maybe give us that report again and so that...
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think that would be an attachment to the directive of council.
Okay.
Yeah, if you can, Mr. Mayor, when, I'm new to council, so I'm going to be asking additional questions. So if there's anything in the past, that's why I make in reference to, just add it as, if there was a report, add it as an appendix.
And then we'll do that.
And that's good for me, but it'd be good to see that. That was my comments, just to make sure. And the other item in there is just if we could review security measures regarding that park. I think that has to also be looked at a little bit. Apparently, there's graffiti there and there was some unlawful use of the park at different times. So I think we need to look at that as part of the report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. This recommendation, we have to go in camera for that because it's not listed in camera?
So the next one, there is one nominee. So essentially, if council is happy with it, they can just go ahead. If they want to discuss the nominee, then we can do it in closed session.
Okay, so go ahead councillor Longo.
I'd like to move the nominee, the sole nominee, if I could.
Second, there's councillor sentence. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Did you want, you're good? Okay. DF-7-2023, Canada Games Park Financials. And again, any questions? The floor is open. And Maria's here to answer. Go ahead councillor De Rose.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to refer this report back to staff for the reason that council unanimously requested both the financial analysis of the Canada Games Walker facility, along with an overview of the agreements that outline the city's roles and responsibilities as they relate to the agreement as consortium partners. And one of the reasons is several of the new members, and councillor D'Angelo brought this up earlier, are unaware of details of previous doings of council. And I think this is an intricate agreement and I think we all need to be brought up to speed if they can summarize it in any way. So I'd ask for a deferral, please, or to refer this back to staff.
There's no debate on that. I have a mover. Can I get a second for that? Councillor D'Angelo, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. DF-8-2023-2022, Development Charges Statement. Is there any discussion on that? I had a mover and a second. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. DF-10-2023-2023, Financial Leases. Can, is there anyone that wants to speak on that? Go ahead councillor D'Angelo.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to, I believe I have a conflict there, but I just need to know. We have a photocopy of leases. Are they with JBM Office Systems? It doesn't clearly state that in the report, but...
I'll ask our director of finance, Maria Moro, is that the case?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, that's correct.
Okay, since I have that answer, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to declare a conflict on this report. My brother works for JBM Office Systems.
Duly noted, okay. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. DF-12-2023, Emergency Replacement of Cemetery IT Equipment. I had a mover and a second, like I said, for all these. Is there anyone that wants any questions regarding this report? Go ahead councillor D'Angelo.
Just a quick question. I know there was some damage done through flooding and I just, I guess, want a bit of a, just if it's a quick update of what's happening with that building because I know we've given some direction, just want to know where we stand on that and if the repairs will be damaged in the future too, if there's issues with the building. That's my concern.
So this equipment, you want to make sure if we're doing repairs, we're not going to have damaged equipment again? Is that what you're trying to find out here, councillor D'Angelo?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The, we expect to have presentation on the cost estimates for the administration building at the next council meeting.
Okay.
Perfect answer, thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor?
I had a question, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question.
Yeah, well, defer that vote until you ask your question. Sorry about that. Go ahead councillor De Rose.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to know how this came about. How did the flood occur? That building's been so contentious, it's going to cost us a ton of money and I think it was almost purposely let go by a previous employee, but that's just my opinion. So I just want to know if staff could answer how this flood happened? Because from what I understood, the building was condemned and no one was allowed in it. So I'm just curious if staff can tell us. Thank you.
Go ahead, Jeff or Dave. I don't know who wants to take that question.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The building had been mothballed because of contamination on site. My understanding was in February, there was a power outage which caused the sun pump to fail, resulting in some flooding. There are some other technical issues that had to be addressed as a result of that. Some of it is a result of the condition of the roof, but that's the primary reason for the issue here. And I can assure you, councillor, that there was no intention to do any further damage to this building by a former employee or anybody on our staff.
Thank you, thank you for that, Jeff. Okay, councillor?
Yeah, I just, Mr. Mayor, I just don't understand why anything of value would have been left in there if it was condemned because of a leak in the roof that was let go for over a period of time. I'm just wondering why anything of value wouldn't have been...
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Part of the reason for the delay was because council had deferred a decision on how the, whether we're putting something in there on a temporary basis or whether we're going to move in and move quickly to do repairs on that building. So while we're waiting to put together the staff reports and get direction from council, there is a period of time of uncertainty where the building had no other option but to be mothballed.
Thank you. Councillor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. DS-31-2023, Two South Main Street Removal of Holding Symbol. Is there any questions regarding that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. LOC-25, Battle Beaverdams Park Designation under Part IV of the Ontario Heritage Act, DS-29-2023. Are there any question? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. DS-28-2023, 205 St. David's Road, Plan of Acre Land Condominium and Assumption Agreement, DO-701-2020. Is there any questions regarding that? Go ahead councillor O'Hair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question is probably going to be...
Uh, this question is, um, probably gonna be directed towards planning. Um, and I'm just wondering about the drawings. Are those preliminary drawings that were, uh, supplied with the report?
Go ahead, Ma.
Through the mayor, thank you for the question. Um, so with respect to this, um, it has already gone through in terms of the draft plan, and at this point, it's coming through for its final approval and then the assumption agreement. So this is sort of the end result of the beginning of the planning process that's made its way through to the final.
Okay, so, um, the reason I'm asking the question is I noticed on the drawing that, uh, at the back of the lot where it backs onto the properties on Renfrew, there's a, a fence that's listed solely as chain link across there. So is that something that's going to be put up there, or is that, uh, something that can be, uh, converted to a board fence for more privacy for those residents who back onto the property?
Through the mayor, thank you. Um, at this point, everything on there has been finalized, so they've gone through the clearance of conditions, um, and at this point, it's just sort of finalizing and then the assumption agreement. So everything that you see there is as it has gone through the process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, okay. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Part Lot Control Bylaws for Council Approval, that's DS thirty, twenty twenty-three. Is there any, uh, questions regarding these part lot controls? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Tender Awards, Sport Utility SUV Multipurpose Passenger Vehicle MVP Four Wheel Drive RFT, that's, uh, for FES seven, twenty twenty-three. Is there anyone, have any questions regarding that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. PWCS forty-four, twenty twenty-three, Request for Proposal Award Geotechnical Investigation for Highway Twenty Water Main Design. Any questions regarding this? Seeing, this is long overdue, seeing, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. PWCS forty-five, twenty twenty-three, Road Assessment, twenty twenty-three Road Assessment. Any questions regarding this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. PWCS fifty-two, twenty twenty-three, Canada Day Update? Is there any questions regarding that? Okay, you can only say that since this report come out there has been more sponsorship that's come forward, um, and continues to, so we'll know, once we get it all in, we'll, we'll, uh, pass that along. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. PWCS ten, uh, fifty-three, twenty twenty-three, Tender Award Guide Rail Repair Replacement Program. Uh, is there any questions? Go ahead, Councillor DeAngelo.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can't pull up my report right now, I seem to be kicked out of the internet, but, um, I don't think there was, uh, any pictures associated with this report. Just a suggestion, uh, if, if sometimes, 'cause there's some guide, guardrails that are being replaced, if we could just have a picture of those, that would be good for council, so that way if any citizens talk to us about it, we know exactly where they're being replaced. It's, it's a good news report, so just if it could, sometimes pictures, uh...
Yeah, no, no, it's a good point, and I think Jeff's, uh, I seen Jeff nodding, so that's, uh, so...
Yeah, that's fine, I know that there, unfortunately, Councillor DeAngelo can't see, there is a description of the locations, but, um, a picture's worth a thousand words, and I think that's...
Okay, that's good. Good. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Uh, PWCS fifty-four, twenty twenty-three, DWQMS First Quarter Report. Any questions regarding that? Go ahead, Councillor O'Hair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. More a comment than a question, I just wanna say, great report, looks, uh, fantastic. And I also want to recognize that Niagara Region, uh, uh, won first place in the, uh, tap water competition at Niagara Falls, so that's, uh...
Yes, they did.
Doubling, uh, up on our, uh, great, uh, water facilities, so congratulations.
And they continue to make upgrades to, uh, the DQ plant, which is a big provider for, uh, most of Thorol, and, uh, they're spending significant, uh, money on that, so... Uh, anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. PWCS fifty-five, twenty twenty-three, Parking Fees for Canada Day and Community Market. Uh, go ahead, councillor.
Uh, just a quick comment, wanna thank staff for putting this report together and working in accordance. Uh, again, uh, it'll be more successful if there's no parking issues, and by waiving the fees, I think that's an excellent way of moving forward to great, get greater participation, so job well done by staff.
Thank you. Uh, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. PWC S fifty-six, twenty twenty-three, Pool Opening Date? Any questions regarding that? Go ahead, Councillor DeRoz.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just wanted to ask, um, I know there's a lot of, uh, moving parts to get these things open. I did get some calls this week because the weather was so nice of recent, uh, weekends about the splash pads. I know they're, they're gonna be open, I believe, June ninth. Uh, and I know there's a lot of, like I said, a lot of moving parts. Is it possible, just wanted to ask staff to get it open earlier than June ninth, or is that a, is that a maintenance issue and, you know, uh, people hours issue? Uh, so if someone on staff could, could, uh, answer that, I'd appreciate it.
Uh, Jeff or Dave, can, uh, you speak to that? Go ahead, Dave. Uh, Dave Baldoni is, uh, uh, our manager of community services. Go ahead.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we have the ability and the capability now to open the splash pads earlier. We passed our regional inspection, uh, Monday afternoon, came back all good to go, so if, uh, if council would like to see them open, we have staff on, on evenings now that can, can accommodate those, those needs for, uh, for users.
So do we need a motion from council to, to, to open them, uh, early? 'Cause when is, when were we gonna open them, the ninth?
Fri- Friday the ninth, that's correct.
So if we wanna open them this weekend, we need a motion from council? Uh, can I get a, uh...
June, June ninth.
Okay, but...
Can I, can I put a motion on it for, Mr. Mayor, for this Friday, if possible?
Yep, um, and a seconder, did you wanna second it, councillor?
Yeah, I'll second, but just make a comment, I'll leave it in staff's hand to open it as quickly as possible with the proper, uh, uh...
So what we'll do, uh...
Yeah.
If possible, Councillor DeRoz, uh, Friday, Saturday, whatever, uh, staff can do at the earliest convenient. Are you good with that?
Yeah, that works, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it from staff. Thank you, Dave.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. That would be good if we can do that, that's excellent.
So, Mr. Mayor, that was an amendment, you just need to call it on the motion as amended.
Okay, that was the amendment, that's voted on, now the whole report. Uh, all those in favor? Opposed?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask a quick question, 'cause it talks about the pool opening, but, uh, again, being new through this one season, uh, will staff look at it about extending hours into the fall if there's an opportunity? I know they don't have to do it now, but is that something that staff will bring forward at that point in time? Or do we need to give them a bit of direction on that?
Question, I don't know, uh, I'll ask, uh, Jeff or Dave to look into that, or...
Um, through you, Mr. Mayor, there, there may be budget implications associated with that. Um, we would prefer to have a recommendation from your Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, um, we can monitor the situation if we need to extend it. Uh, as we get towards the end of the season, we start to lose some of our seasonal staff who go back to school, um, so there may be some additional staff concerns.
So can the Parks and Trails look at, um, uh, go ahead. I know it's an issue with lifeguards that go back to university, but...
Yeah, it's, it's a personnel issue, but that's why we're trying this week early to see if this works, see if it, uh, you know, there's budgetary, uh, problems, see how many people get to use it, and then, uh, the, the plan from the committee is to expand it from there. And we always get splash pads at the end of the year with the good weather that we're always bothering you guys to stay open.
We expanded splash pads last year, I know we did that.
We should just make that permanent.
But it's something we can evaluate and, uh, look at, and there's no rush now.
I'll bring it up next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I don't need an answer now, but if that's something the committee could look at and work with staff, uh, so that we're not here at the end of August saying, should we keep it open or shouldn't, and what implications? So they've done some pre-planning going into it, so they have an idea in terms of staffing costs and anything.
Well, and that's what we're doing the week before, so the cost would probably be the same. You have to have a minimum, so...
Yep.
That's the thought, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that is, did we, uh, did we vote on that? No. All those in favor? We did, after the amendment, then the question was asked, okay. Just wanna make sure we got it covered. DS thirty-three, twenty twenty-three, Part Lot Control Exemption Bylaw for Council Approval, uh, the ones listed there on Burl Oak Drive. Uh, any questions regarding that? All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. That's the end of the consent reports, now we move to item for consideration, uh, DF eleven, twenty twenty-three, uh, can I get a mover and a seconder before I put this on the floor? I got councillor sentence and councillor O'Hair, and then I'll turn it over to our Director of Finance, Maria Moore.
Um, through Mr. Mayor, the recommendation is that a budget adjustment of fifty-five-hundred dollars for purchase of equipment and services to support live streaming meetings at remote locations be approved to be funded from the Municipal Development Reserve.
Uh, any questions regarding that report? Go ahead, councillor O'Hair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think this is an excellent, uh, uh, idea, um, serving on a few committees, uh, sometimes it's a bit difficult, uh, to get everyone to City Hall, and it also would open up options for, uh, committee meetings in other places, let's say the old, old Fire Hall, or, uh, some other heritage building. I'm speaking specifically about the Heritage Committee, but other committees can use this, uh, as well, um, to have other locations to, uh, conduct their committee business. And, uh, it would be nice to add to, uh, uh, having another option, uh, as to where we can live stream, so, uh, I fully support this, I think it's a great idea.
Uh, go ahead, councillor sentence.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the clerk, so it'll stay with you. Who can pick it up? Will it be the chairs of each committee that can come get it, and will they get training?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the councillor, uh, this would be equipment that would remain with clerk staff, uh, so the clerk staff would, uh, essentially our legislative assistant would have control over it. They would work with our, um, essentially a laptop to bring it, set it up, ensure it's recorded properly, and bring it back to City Hall.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Go ahead, councillor DeAngelo.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just, um, if we're gonna buy this equipment, is there other usage that we can have? And the one thought I have is, um, the runway of recognition. Um, sometimes COGCO's there, sometimes they're not. Is this something that, if we're doing a committee meeting, can we do, uh, us, 'cause it's a city council, uh, committee and it's a city council event, is that something we could do some live streaming, so, um...
I don't know if it's gonna be that capable, but, uh, our Matt, Matt's here, and Matt Watson's our, uh, head of IT, and I'm sure he can answer this. We got you on the hot seat now, Matt.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, it could be used for other, uh, committees, but, uh, the camera that we chose is really designed for like conference room kind of setup, um, so doing something like the runway, I don't know that that would work. But certainly there are other meetings that it could work for.
Okay, well, if it's just a necessary, just a camera, I don't need an answer tonight, but maybe we can investigate this further to get usage out of the equipment that we're purchasing. Uh, I'm just thinking, 'cause that would be good to have, um, to livestream something like that, so everyone could see it. Not everyone's gonna be there that evening, and it might, and I'm just thinking one off top, there might be other ones too, that might be beneficial to have that.
Good question, uh, I think, uh, councillor Decker may have an answer, 'cause I think do, do you, is that part of what you do with that?
I know COGCO will be there to livestream the, uh, runway of recognition there on June the twelfth, so I do know that they have them booked.
Okay, thank you. Um, it's a point well taken, though. Uh, all those in favor? Oh, wait, what? Oh, sorry, councillor O'Hair, go ahead, did you have a question? You want Matt to stay up there?
Yes, yes, get back there, Matt. All right, um, what, uh, are the requirements to have, uh, this as a functioning system? Does it work, uh, completely independently, or does it need to ride on someone else's Wi-Fi?
No, so this is a complete package and includes buying a cellular hotspot. So like I said, it's a complete package, everything we need to, to set up and go.
Great, so we could use it anywhere in the city?
Yes.
Wonderful, great, thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. CLK six, twenty twenty-three, Appointment of the Integrity Commissioner? Uh, can I get a mover and a seconder for that report? Yeah, councillor sentence and councillor Debodinas, um, and I'll turn this over to our clerk.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The report before you is, is for information purposes, but also to specifically seek direction from, from council. Uh, we have an integrity commissioner currently, and they will continue to serve, um, until we have a decision on this. What we're seeking direction from are essentially the three options that we have for the remainder of this term. You can certainly renew your contract with our current integrity commissioner, uh, we can issue a, uh, RFP, a request for proposals, to invite others in to, uh, to put in their tenders to their, um, requests, to see if they would like to take on that contract. The other option is Niagara Region does have a contract that they fill that includes a clause that would allow the local area municipalities to use their negotiated rate and integrity commissioner, uh, without following. So those are the three options before you. My only comment to that would be, uh, traditionally we have gone with a full freedom, or a, a full RFP process, as it does provide for the, you know, accountability and transparency of those who are submitting those requests.
Go ahead, I seen councillor Long go ahead, his hand up first. Go ahead, councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just a little, I don't wanna say too much about, um, any selection here, because there's two individuals named here, and it seems to me like, um, we wouldn't normally, uh, award a contract to different construction companies by speaking about either one. Should this not be done in a different manner, potentially in camera, to discuss these options?
Good point, uh, I'll let the clerks, he can have it, yeah.
Uh, so, when it comes to a sole source and a renewal of a contract, um, it would really just be a continuation of what we're already doing, so it's known to the public that we're doing that, and just choosing to continue with our service provider as that sole source would be one of those options, so that wouldn't be something that we would do in closed. The other two options really are also public, um, uh, the information is already public, including the contract details, the ability for other municipalities to jump in on those, uh, unless, of course, council wants to go ahead with the RFP, in which case, once we have those results, to your point, yes, any further discussion on selection might go through a closed session.
Uh, again, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable, uh, talking with names here, uh, firm names in open session, um, 'cause I have some questions I would like to ask, but I really don't wanna ask questions of law firms in a, in a public, uh...
Those questions be asked in closed session, and then we come back out and deal with the report at the end? That's, uh...
So I guess through you, Mr. Mayor, would be if we're talking about questions on performance, perhaps, or anything related to the current contract, absolutely, we could do that in closed, if you wanted to ask questions, uh, or perhaps receive some form of legal advice beyond that, we could certainly do that in closed as well. Um, we would probably be best to defer that to the, the next meeting if that were the case.
Okay, uh, councillor O'Hair?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so my question is, uh, in the report, we're given a fee, an hourly fee for, from the Niagara Region's Integrity Commissioner, but we can't compare it to anything. So I don't know if that's something, again, as councillor Longo pointed out, we should be discussing in, uh, in camera session, or if that's something you can share with us, but I think if we're gonna compare, uh, and look at some of the different options, we need to know all the facts.
Yeah, and that's a fair question, Mr. Mayor, we could certainly go in to discuss, uh, current fees. The reason the fees that are in there right now are because, again, they were made public by not only Niagara Region's approval of the report, as well as other local area municipalities that did use that clause to use their services. So we could go into closed session to discuss further in terms of fee structure.
So when we go into closed session, let's move this report in there, and then.
We can do that.
We can deal with it after when we come out, okay? Go ahead, Counselor Sentence.
I understand what everybody's saying, but if we do the RFP portion, aren't we being as open and transparent and no names? Like, it's just.
But that is true, but we can deal with that when we, after the questions are answered and we come out, we may choose to go that route, and we would do that. If that's the will of council. You understand where I'm coming from?
I do understand. I just, I was going to go with number two, and I think that's open, transparent, and done. But if you want to talk in camera, we can talk in camera.
But we'll come out and deal with the report, okay? Is that the way we'll do it? I just want to, because of those questions may be answered, but then we come out, we have to deal with that. Counselor DeRose, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Should we be asking for a deferral so we have more information then?
While there's some questions that we can answer, we might be able to have them answered. Are we going to be able to answer them there?
Mr. Mayor, we may be able to answer some of the questions tonight. If council decides it needs more information to make the decision, then at that point, I'd recommend deferring. In either case, my recommendation would be to go forward with an RFP if council is uncertain, again, because it does provide an opportunity for any proponent to put forth their, their best suggestion.
Yeah, I'd like to put a motion forward that we do the RFP. I think it covers.
Okay, thank you.
Covers everything.
Okay, so we have a motion, and I want to make sure everybody's comfortable with that. That, well, you'll know when we vote. But you want to go the RFP route, and Counselor DeAngela has seconded that. Does anyone want to speak to that any further? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. So we're going to go the RFP route. There's no need to go on camera and ask any questions. That decision has been made by council, okay? Okay. Now we'll go to 12.4. Reallocation of capital funding for the purchase of licensing software enhancements. Can I get a mover and a seconder on this, Counselor Decker? And can I get a seconder, please? Counselor Dividinus. And I'll turn this over to Jason. You're up. I seen you on the screen, now you get a chance to speak to me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the recommendations of this report are, one, that the report DS 24 2023 be received; two, that the purchase of planning software from PSD Citywide Inc. using the negotiated method at a cost of $38,872.32 inclusive of HST be approved; three, that the reallocation of $11,127.68 from the Citywide Planning Software Capital Budget and an overrun of $1,185.28 to purchase the software enhancements for managing licenses be approved; and four, that the purchase of licensing software from PSD Citywide Inc. using the negotiated method at a cost of $12,312.96 inclusive of HST be approved. The recommendations of this report.
Did I get a mover and a seconder? Yes, I did. Does anyone have any questions for Jason regarding that? And because he's on Zoom, we'll have a slow motion answer. No questions? All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. 12.5. PWCS Tender Award Cemetery Roads Repair Program, 502 CS 3001. Can I get a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor O'Hara and Counselor DeAngela, and I'll turn it over to Jeff Holman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The recommendation is that request for tender number 502 CS 3001 respecting the cemetery tar and chip program be awarded to Walker Construction Limited at a contract price of $56,006, including contingency and excluding HST. And two, that council approve a budget overrun of $7,000 to be funded, 50% from the Cemetery General Reserve and 50% from the Mausoleum General Reserve. And three, that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the necessary contracts and agreements.
The floor is open if there's any questions regarding that. Go ahead, Counselor DeAngela.
I was just going to say, there's an excellent picture in the report, so thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor O'Hara.
Have you seen a preview of Mr. Holman?
Oops, there we go. And I have to say, I really agree with this upgrade. The roads needed back there. And in collaboration with our Cemetery Master Plan, we need to make sure we upkeep the cemetery. It's a beautiful property, and this will really, this work will really improve that section back there. So I fully support the move on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And now I'm going to move to notices of motion. I got Counselor Decker for her note of motion.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to provide a notice of motion respecting any surplus funds from the Canada Day 2023 event.
And that's coming to the next council.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Sentence. No, no, not today. It's just she's. Anyone else? Go ahead, Counselor Longo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next meeting, I'd like to bring a notice of motion regarding timing of our public meetings, unless the clerk can tell me a reason why I don't need to.
Okay. I'll let you.
More specifically, starting at 6:30 rather than 5:30.
Okay, so I'll let the clerk work with you on that. Do you, or do you want to speak to that right now?
So, Mr. Mayor, through you, to the counselor. It was a decision of staff to move that out of the meetings to attempt for some agenda management. If it is the desire of council to move those back into the meetings, that's something we can consider. I might ask, I don't know if the CIO has anything to add on that, but staff can certainly take this away and look at other options.
Go ahead, Manoj.
Mr. Mayor, I think this was solely done for the agenda management purposes. However, if council wishes this to start at 6:30, we can certainly do that.
Jason, did you want to speak? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize if there's a delay in my connectivity here. But, yeah, it was solely a decision of staff. We found that especially the public meetings for planning matters were eating up a large part of the evening for council's agenda. And so in efforts to utilize the time more efficiently, we decided to, that we would, if council wishes to move it back to 6:30, that is at their discretion.
Thank you. So you can work on, is another option that we would do it on another Tuesday? You know, depending on the agendas? Like, if we have a heavy agenda and we have to have something, are we open to do it on maybe the Tuesday before a regular council? Go ahead, Manoj.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that's certainly a consideration. If we have a very full agenda, and if you want to stagger it on a different Tuesday and start at 6:30, and then, you know, maybe we have an hour-long meeting from 6:30 to 7:30, staff is, if that is council's wishes, we are happy to come.
So why don't, Counselor Longo, because it's going to be your motion, so obviously you can put what you want. Would you want to include in that that it's 6:30? But if we know we got a heavy agenda, maybe we have to be, provide some flexibility? Are you good with that?
Mr. Mayor, it sounds like my motion's already on the floor.
I know. No, no, you work with that and put what you want in your motion, and we'll deal with it at the next council meeting.
That sounds good.
Okay, that's the best way. Okay? So that's going to be dealt with that way. And then if the council likes it, fine. If they don't, we'll debate it then. Oh, there is a motion. Tree giveaway and rain barrel program. And I'll turn this over to Counselor Sentence to introduce the motion. Do you have a seconder? Counselor O'Hara, okay, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'll start at the whereas, Matthew, is that okay? Whereas the City of Thorold recognizes the importance of preserving and enhancing the natural environment for health and well-being of its residents. And whereas promoting sustainable practices and conservation initiatives aligns with the city's commitment to environmental stewardship. And whereas the tree giveaway and rain barrel sale program can contribute to the improvement of air quality, stormwater management, and overall environmental sustainability, now therefore let it be resolved that the corporation of the City of Thorold enacts as follows. Let staff be directed to prepare a report outlining the feasibility, cost, implications, and potential implementation strategies for a tree giveaway and rain barrel sale program, and that staff consult the Environment, Climate Change, and Biodiversity Advisory Committee on the process and draft before bringing the report to council. Can I make a comment on it?
Yes, you can, Counselor.
For my, I know that's your committee. I see this as being part of the Knights of Columbus when they do their, their weekend for the weed and feed and for the mulch and everything. If they'd let us do it with them and set up there, and then any trees left over, you know, you could pick up at our operations center or something. That's, that's how I see it, but that's up to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak to that? Go ahead, Counselor DeAngela.
Well, just along with that, I know you had the rain barrel and you had the trees, but also compost. That was always done in the past, too, the compost.
Well, they already have it, so.
Well, yeah, it's as an encompassing thing, so it's all together for the event. So it's more of, yeah.
If we do walkers, walkers would be a good partner for that. Okay. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Counselor DeRose, your statement regarding the regional council.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I wanted to request that council receive regular updates from our city's regional representatives, yourself and Counselor Whalen, on a quarterly basis, utilizing the regional counselor update standing item on the agenda. I just feel, I've been reading, I have to usually find out things regionally through the, through the media. And I'm just really concerned about something I recently read about the CD How Institute, the report they put out on the region's basically lack of clarity, completeness, and transparency in their budget-making and financing report. And personally, I've always been under the impression, and I thought it was going to change after the last few elections, but in my opinion, the region at times spends recklessly, and half our taxes go to the region. So I'm very concerned about it, but I'd like to be kept in the loop and on a consistent basis. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So that's the motion to, did we have a seconder for that motion? Counselor Dividinus, okay. What?
Just a statement, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, that was a statement. You're right, I'm sorry. I know. So that's the quarterly report and that statement. And I know I've already talked to Counselor Whalen, and he's more than happy to do that. Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Closed session. So we're going into closed session. Before I ask for a mover and a seconder to go into closed session, I would like to remind you of your obligations respecting closed session. Those who are participating electronically in the closed session must ensure that no other person is in the location from which they are taking part in the meeting or make appropriate arrangements so that any other persons cannot see or hear any of the confidential deliberations taking place. If this is not possible, you must withdraw from the meeting until it is reconvened in open session. Can I get a mover and a seconder? I have a mover, Counselor O'Hara, a seconder, Counselor Sentence, that we move into closed session for the purpose of receiving information of a confidential nature respecting a matter of advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege under Section 239 1F of the Municipal Act 2001 Tax Increment Financing Application. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. So we'll give, does Counselor have to move into the closed session link? Okay. You can stand.